We are live.
Good evening, everyone. This meeting of the Essex County Board of County Commissioners is hereby called to order. Due to the COVID-19 outbreak and to be in compliance with the Governor's executive order, this meeting is being conducted remotely. The public is able to view this meeting via livestream on Facebook and YouTube. We are live. A link for the livestream is posted on the Commissioner's website. To all participating in this meeting, please be mindful to put your microphone on mute until speaking. Additionally, please identify yourself by putting your name on the record each time before you speak. Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Cooper.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Luciano.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo.
Here.
Commissioner Seehoel.
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres.
Here.
Commissioner President Richardson.
I am here. We will omit the salute to the flag since we are conducting this meeting remotely. However, for all of those affected and/or lost to the COVID-19 virus, let's pause for a moment of silence. You know, we had another mass killing today in San Jose, California. So let's keep all of those folks who are now deceased and their family members and our thoughts and prayers. So let's have a moment of silence. I have before me certification from the Clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, are any transcripts to be approved?
Mr. President, there are none.
Any topics of discussion?
Mr. President, there are none.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to public comment session. Today's meeting is a combined conference board meeting, and we will vote on every item on the agenda. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had an opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration and can also call in. At this portion of the meeting, the Clerk will have additional instructions for our callers. Madam Clerk.
If you are calling in, you will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your callers receive. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. At this time, our Public Information Officer will announce the caller so they can state their comment or question and be reminded that you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. At this time, we're accepting only calls pertaining to agenda items. Please note, you will have the opportunity to call back later in the meeting at the designated time for the public comment session on non-agenda items. Charlo Malumbah, our Public Information Officer, will begin the public session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Charlo Malumbah, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners. We have some callers waiting to speak. The first caller is Jay Arena. Mr. Arena, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Yes, hi. Jay Arena, Newark, New Jersey. Again, on the directions for calling into this meeting, it needs to be clear the number and code for speaking to agenda items. On the directions, all I saw was for the public comment period, which the Board, formerly the Freeholders, now the Board of Commissioners, rearranged to make us wait to the end of the meeting so you would not hear us speak. So these games have to end. But let me speak to the Board, and it's around the ICE concentration camp and the immediate release of the detainees that you have. Now, I received a response, an email response, to my question about releasing the detainees. And of course, you said, oh, we've passed resolutions, which I haven't seen. I'd like to see those resolutions, calling for the ICE to release detainees. The one I'd like, these resolutions, which I don't recall. But you also said, well, it's in their hands to release them. Well, one issue is, the Governor can release them under public health grounds. So again, I call particularly on Commissioner Gill, who's a major advisor, a key advisor to the Governor, and all of you are members of the Democratic Party, to demand that he use his authority to release these detainees on public health grounds. The other issue is, which I did not receive a response to for my comments last week, is around the contract. DiVincenzo only suspended the contract. He leaves the door open to resuming taking in detainees, continuing the ICE concentration camp. Now, the President of the Board, Mr. Richardson, in an email that I had received, said it had been permanently closed, but that's contradicted by what the county executive has said. So I want the Board to clarify, if it is continuing, if it hasn't ended, that, one, you need to use your authority to end this contract. You've approved it, and you have a right, under the contract--
Thirty seconds, Mr. Arena.
--to be ended by either party within four months. So when is the Board going to kill this permanently? That's what I'm asking, Mr. Richardson and the rest of the Board. When is this contract going to be permanently, immediately, and permanently ended? DiVincenzo has not done that. So we need it permanently killed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, Charlo Malumbah, our Public Information Officer, for clarity, that was not an agenda item comment. I'm instructing you that if a person is talking for non-agenda items for this part of public comment, the call should be stopped and invite them to come back at the proper part of the agenda. We have not changed this since I've been here, and I've been here for many years. We always do public comments for agenda items first, prior to the agendas being discussed. And then we do non-agenda items at the second public comment session near the end of the meeting. So I'm instructing you, Charlo, to make sure that we adhere to this process and these guidelines. Please continue.
Understood. Thank you. Our next caller is Mary Rizzo. Ms. Rizzo, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Mary Rizzo. I live in Newark, New Jersey, and I'm calling to speak to an agenda item J1, which is the ordinance re-appropriating $7.8 million of funds not needed for their original purposes to be used for various improvements for various county facilities. And what I would like to ask the Board is for you to reconsider the use of these extra funds to be put toward the purpose of helping the detainees who will be depopulated from the Essex County Correctional Facility this summer. I think that there are at least two actions that you should take with regard to the detainees. First, as you know, ICE has the power to release rather than transfer detainees. The detainees currently held at ECCF have suffered through a pandemic. Some of them have been on hunger strikes. They are desperate to get out of this jail and to be with their families. So I would like you all to think what you can do-- So I would like you all to think what you can do in your position as elected officials to ensure their releases. And one thing that you certainly can do is to increase the funding that you have for lawyers to represent these detainees, especially if they are transferred, so that they have legal representation that follows them even if they are transferred. So can you use some of this additional money that you have found that has not been used for this purpose? You have a responsibility, when you are depopulating this facility, to ensure that the detainees are treated as humanely as possible. If you decide not to pursue the route of giving them increased money for legal representation, then what else can you do? Can you put pressure on ICE to release them? Can you put pressure on our Democratic Congressional Representatives to pressure ICE to release them? This is your responsibility. Secondly, the state legislature has just released the bill S3361 from committee, and this bill would stop the renewal of ICE contracts and prevent new contracts with ICE in the future in New Jersey. So now that you're getting out of this ICE detention money game, I would like you to show us that you really mean it by passing a resolution in support of this bill. You did this for the driver's license bill for undocumented immigrants. So this is another step towards protecting the rights of our immigrant community. So will you pass a resolution as a Board in support of the bill S3361, which would end ICE detention in New Jersey? Thank you very much.
Thirty seconds. All right. Thank you. Our next caller is Whitney Strube. Mr. Strube, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Sure. Whitney Strube, Newark, New Jersey. I'm calling as a member of North Jersey PSA, the Democratic Socialists of America. And I'm also speaking to agenda item J1, because I think if you can find nearly $8 million of funds not needed for their original purposes in Essex County, surely you can find money to give full legal representation that will follow anyone who is transferred, so that we maintain our ethical obligation to them, even if ICE does transfer them, as well as funding bonds for release so that people don't get transferred. I truly cannot think of an argument against this, which is both morally sound and apparently financially sound as well. Having said that, I do want to object to the idea that we need to speak to agenda items. It's demonstrably true that between 2018 and 2020, there was an open public comment section before the rest of the meeting began. I know that, as well as many people who participated in this, because we spoke at them regularly. And I know that the open public comment was moved to the end partly to, you know, sort of spare people having to hear democracy in action from the ongoing protest against ICE collaboration. I do have a few questions for the record that I would like answered, namely, one, what concrete measures have you taken since the last meeting to prevent transfers of people who are going to be depopulated from the jail? I'd like to know what the Board is doing. You know, I think that would be useful for us to understand. Two, will you formally terminate the ICE contract? As others have suggested, we are a little skeptical of where this is headed, since you called it an end, and it doesn't seem to actually be ending. So that'd be good to have on the record as well. And then finally, will you pass a resolution formally attesting that Essex County will not hold detainees for ICE in the future and will not derive revenue from private facilities or other facilities that do detain people for ICE? I wasn't very satisfied with the answer I got to that last time when I asked about the concrete measures you would take. And I got, the entirety of the response was, "It is not the intention of the Essex County Correctional Facility to house ICE detainees after August 23rd." That's not quite the sort of, you know, striking commitment to not redetaining that I'm looking for here. And so again, I think a resolution formalizing that would seem doable and necessary. And then finally, with whatever time I have--
Thirty seconds.
This system just does not work. You had the wrong password up on your own website and on Twitter. You had a different password up on the Facebook streaming site, which also didn't work. In Bergen County and Hudson County, people simply log on to Zoom and comment. And I have not heard one good reason why Essex County can't do that as well. I think this suppresses participation, and it drives people out, and it's anti-democratic. And so my final question--
Three minutes.
Will you allow people to comment over Zoom in these meetings? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do not have any more callers waiting to speak.
That will complete our first public comment session regarding agenda items. We've received no email correspondence for public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And again, you know, we will make sure that all your comments and questions will be answered by folks who need to answer them. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for introduction and first reading?
Mr. President, we have none.
Do we have any ordinances or resolutions for listing purposes only?
Mr. President, we have none.
Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances, resolutions on second reading and public hearing tonight?
Yes, Mr. President, we have two. Ordinance number O-2021-0006 and 00007.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move to public hearing on ordinance O-2021-00006. And please read it into the record at a later time. I do hereby declare the public hearing on resolution O-2021-00006 open. If there is any member of the public who emailed comments for or against this ordinance, we'll read it into the comments, into the record, and respond to you in writing if there are any callers in the queue, Madam Clerk.
Charlo Malumbah, do we have any callers in the queue?
Excuse me. Charlo Malumbah, Public Information Officer. We do not have any callers in the queue waiting to speak.
Thank you. We have none, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let the record reflect, no comments were received or no callers are waiting. Mr. McInerney, questions or comments? You're on mute, sir.
I don't have any questions, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio.
Mr. President, just a reminder from when this was on, first reading, this is re-appropriating funds that were approved back in January 2020 that were no longer needed for the intended project for various facility improvements that are now needed.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing none. I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Gill to close public hearing on ordinance O-2021-00006. Do I have the same mover and second to approve the ordinance? Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill. Did we lose Gill?
Mr. President, I'll move it if he's not available.
Okay. Commissioner Vice President Pumarres. Do I have the same mover and a second to approve these ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill, absent. Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
Still moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move to the public hearing on ordinance O-2021-00007, and please read it into the record at a later time. I hereby declare the public hearing on resolutions O-2021-00007 open. If there is any member of the public who emailed comments for or against this ordinance, we will read the comments into the record and respond to you in writing. Is there any callers in the queue?
Mr. President, Charlo Malumbah, Public Information Officer. We do not have any callers in the queue waiting to speak.
Thank you. Let the record reflect, no comments were received, and there are no callers waiting. Mr. McInerney.
Sorry, Mr. President. No comment.
Mr. Polavecchio.
I don't have a comment on the ordinance, just a question before we take the roll call. Madam Clerk, are you able to see the Freeholders who are appearing by phone? I don't see them on my screen.
No, that's something we're going to address going forward if it can't be done today. That was the concern of the President, to be able to see. So I'm going to ask through you, Mr. President, that the callers who are on the phone are Commissioner Cooper and Commissioner Luciano. If you're going to need to leave the meeting, please notify us so we can ensure that we have a phone.
I do see Commissioner Cooper, her name on the screen.
Did that start before? I just don't see it now. That's why I was asking if others could see.
Yeah.
I don't see Commissioner Luciano, though.
Yes.
I can see Commissioner Luciano, but it doesn't show-- Well, now Brendan Gill just can't--
So, Mr. President, it appears that your request has been addressed. I see the names on both the callers.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioners. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Johnson to close the public hearing on ordinance O-2021-0007. Do I have the same mover and second to approve the ordinance?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
Still moved.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do have an item that we'll have to come back to. And that is the public hearing on the Ermin Parks Grant. That will be heard after 6:00, correct?
Yes. As soon as 6:00 comes, or close to it, Mr. President, then we can go back to that item.
Okay. Thank you. So let's go to resolutions one and two. We'll read into the record-- Oh, that is-- Resolutions one and two, we'll read into the record at a later date. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, members of the Board. Item resolution number one is a budget assertion, an amount of $12,971, coming out of the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. This is a new grant to cover some system costs to allow the Board to get up-to-date data and get it more readily through improved IT systems. Item two is also a budget assertion. There was an original allocation back in January of $257,511. This is a new amount, an amount of $840,549, to be allocated to some service organizations that'll come up later on, the next three items. This is a budget assertion of $840,549 for that purpose. And for both of these, there is no county match.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Polavecchio.
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney.
Mr. President, these are strictly assertion of grant revenues. They have no impact on operating budget whatsoever. So no problem with these.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions or comments? Commissioner--
Thank you. Could we just have a brief explanation of why Newark is not included?
Newark applies for its own grants, and Newark has always had its own program, so it's not included in ours.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Mercado to take resolutions one and two as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
Still moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions three through five, which are from the Division of Community Action, and we'll read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. McCoy is going to address these items.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Terrence McCoy, and I'm with the Division of Community Action. And I'm before you with regards to resolutions three, four, and five. All three resolutions are pertaining to agencies that perform said services under the CSBG grant for the population of Essex County, with the exception of Newark. And this is amendment grant to give them additional dollars for continued services throughout the fiscal 2020 grant period.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio.
Just to clarify, for the additional funding, additional funding came available through the state. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. President. That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. McInerney.
My question, this is 2020, so have these funds from the county's side been already expended?
Through you, Mr. President. These grant dollars are for grant year 2021.
Okay. I thought I heard you say 2020. All right. So these are for 2021. These are just additional dollars that have been allocated to the county. In addition--
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Commissioner Sebel.
We have a list of the towns covered, please.
Through you, Mr. President. All towns are covered, as long as the household falls under 200% of the income-poverty guidelines.
But this only goes to certain towns. Could you give us the list of the towns?
Sure. Through you, Mr. President. The towns are East Orange, Irvington, Orange, Belleville, Lower Bloomfield, Lower Montclair, and Lower West Orange.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. I have a motion from Commissioner Vice President Pumarres and a second from Commissioner Sebel. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper.
This is for items three, four, five, and six, right?
No, three, four, and five.
Three, four, and five. Yes.
Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Gill. Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved. Mr. President, I've just been informed that Commissioner Luciano will be leaving the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number six, which is from the Division of Youth Services. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a resolution to, to accept participation into the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative Grant Program. This is money that we inserted in the budget back in October of twenty twenty, and this is simply required by the state to allow us to participate. It's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, ninety-five percent of which is programmatic, a hundred and fourteen thousand and six thousand dollars is for administrative cost to support the needs of detention center alternative juveniles for the year twenty twenty one, and it's, there is no county match.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Polavecchio.
No questions.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions, Mr. President.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Commissioner Sebo, you have a question or comment?
No, I do not, thank you.
Okay. So I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Gill to take three, four, and five as one. Oh, I'm sorry, resolution six. I was going backwards. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
I'm present and not voting.
Commissioner Luciano is absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolution number seven, which is from the Department of Corrections, and please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Director Ortiz will address this item.
Good evening. Alfaro Ortiz, Director, Essex County Correction Facility. I'm here to seek the approval of the Commissioners for the competitive contract, through the competitive contracting process to solicit proposals for vendors to provide off-site housing for inmates confined at the Essex County Correctional Facility. The current contract expires at the end of the year, and we'd like to get a leg up on this thing so we can do what we have to do to have a contractor in place. I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr. Polavecchio.
Yep, thanks, Mr. President. Director Ortiz, you did say this is replacing or seeking to replace an existing contract. Is this something that requires state DOC or some other state approval before it comes back to the board? So in other words, this is just, just to make sure we're clear, at this point, we're just seeking authorization to use the competitive contracting process in order that you can go out for the proposal. So this doesn't approve, this doesn't approve anything substantive, this is more procedural. But I'm just looking down the line, once we have specs put together, is that something the state needs to review or approve?
That is correct. Alfaro Ortiz, Director, Essex County Correction Facility, this is just to advertise and seek vendors that are eligible to apply. We're going to have some specifications, and those that are eligible will be considered and will go through the process. It's strictly just an advertisement to seek vendors.
Yeah, I, I understand that part, I just was curious if after, once we get past this step and then we get to the point where we're going to advertise, does the state get involved because we go to Corrections and the Heights?
Alfaro Ortiz, not to my knowledge, unless the county council or the administrator knows something different, not to my knowledge.
Mr. President, if I may, Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council, I think I can probably respond to the question. These particular specifications, once they are drafted, if the board was to approve the county's request to go out through the competitive contract, contracting process, would need to be approved by the State Comptroller's Office because of the nature of this contract. So part of the reason for the lead time on, on this, as Director Ortiz indicated, is that not only does this, the current contract end at the end of this year, but we need to prepare the new specifications, and then they need to be submitted to the state for approval before it can be put out and advertised.
Thank you. Thank you. So this gives us ample time to get ahead of a contract that ends in December. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Polavecchio. Mr. McInerney.
Is this, is this contract similar or to replace the Delaney Hall contract?
Alfaro Ortiz, Director, Essex County, correct? Yes.
Okay. What, what's the status of that contract now in terms of population and use of, of that facility?
Right now, the current count as of six o'clock this morning was three hundred and ten. It vacillates, goes down, goes up. Due to the pandemic situation, you know, there's certain individuals, you know, that are not eligible to be there because, you know, they're out on the street now, but we anticipate, you know, that coming back after the situation with pandemic subsides. But that's where we're at, we're using it right now.
So are all the prerequisites that were applied to the Delaney Hall contract, that being, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Director, in terms of nonviolent, those inmates that are there for nonviolent offenses, those type of, of criteria, they stay still applicable in this potentially new, new, new contract offer?
Alfaro Ortiz, Director, the, the current requirements will remain. Individuals that, you know, are state sentenced than other types of crimes will not be eligible, the, as we are doing right now, that will remain going forward.
And you see the need for this to continue, correct? I mean, the need for, for a Delaney Hall type of setting to, to be required by Department of Corrections?
Alfaro Ortiz, Director, yes, absolutely. They provide multiple skills, you know, just the inmate view job, interview job, applications, substance abuse, family counseling, self-improvement, and a whole host of stuff that these individuals can benefit from. So, you know, we're also trying to get people not to come back to jail.
Gotcha. Well, how does the, how is this contract impacted by our ICE contract? Is there any correlation between the two in terms of use of Delaney Hall?
Alfaro Ortiz, Director, no, there is no correlation between the two, two separate entities total.
Right. So do we, do we ever have ICE detainees in Delaney Hall?
Under Alfaro Ortiz, Director, that was a separate contract with them, and it never got involved with the county. So it was two separate buildings, well, one building with two separate sections, and there was no, no involvement either way. It was just ICE with Delaney Hall, and we managed them at that time, and now we have the county, so.
So this is independent of ICE? This is just a solely different program to reduce the, the opportunity for inmates to return to the county jail?
Correct.
Okay. Hold on one second, let me get my, I had a thought here. The, is this, is this contract going to be necessary going, I mean, at any point in time, is this still being funded by the state? I know we were getting money for Delaney Hall that we were able to anticipate as a revenue every year with regard to the amount of, you know, inmates that were participating in this program? Is that something that the state still is behind in terms of funding, is, to some degree?
Alfaro Ortiz, Director, yes, that's still correct, we're still funded by a grant from New Jersey Department of Corrections.
And that, and that grant, does that grant cover just about, it covers a per diem rate, correct? A certain per diem rate that we get for inmates in that? Okay, all right. All right, thank you, thank you, Director. I appreciate your answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a few. Director Ortiz, who owns the facility right now that Delaney Hall is operating out of?
Alfaro Ortiz, Director, I believe it's GEO, I'm almost positive it's GEO.
And?
Corrections Corporation.
So they own that building?
Correct.
Okay. So how many prisoners does that facility hold?
I'm going to give a wild guess, but I, I think it's a little more than fifteen hundred beds they have. It's just a lot more than that, though.
And right now, you have just over three hundred bodies there? Another question you may have an answer to. How many agencies are out there who can meet the current criteria in terms of the level of services and, you know, the things that the state requires for a facility like that to operate? Do you have an idea who the others are out there?
I believe there's a couple out there, not many, that can handle the volume that we have, but there's a couple out there I just can't name right now, but I, I'm aware that in previous submissions for, for, for this contract in previous years, there were a couple of them, but I don't know if they still exist.
So this might be a lesson in futility, you put this out there and only one responds. It could possibly be just the incumbent who, who responds because you're not sure if there's any others out there, is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Alfaro, Alfaro Ortiz, Director, yes, that could be the case, yes.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Mr. President, can I ask another question?
Mr. McInerney.
Director Ortiz, is there any other facilities outside of Delaney Hall that we use?
Alfaro Ortiz, Director, no, not for this purpose, no.
Okay, are there, are there any other facilities for other purposes that, that we use? Isn't there, I, I don't know why I want to say the Lincoln something, or was, was there another facility involved at one point?
Alfaro Ortiz, no, we only use Delaney Hall for this. When I said, not for this purpose, I meant like university hospital, we use them for other purposes, medical issues, but for this specific purpose of housing, providing training, and what we require of them, Delaney Hall is the only one we use.
Okay. And that, that's true of any, any program that, there's, we don't outsource any of our inmates other than to, to the hospital for health purposes or to Delaney Hall for the program that's been instituted there. There is no other outsource inmates. All right, thank you very much, Director.
Thank you.
Mr. McInerney. Commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Johnson. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano. Is absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Commissioner Gill. Absent. Commissioner Cooper.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumarres.
Yes.
And Commissioner President Richardson. President, you're on mute.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions eight and nine, which are from the Office of County Counsel. Please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council Gassion is going to address these issues.
Thank you, good evening. Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council. Resolution number eight is seeking the approval of a, of a memorandum of understanding between the County of Essex and the township of South Orange Village for the South Orange Community Care and Justice Project. This is a one-year agreement with a total amount being funded by the County of Essex in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. This, this one hundred thousand dollar contribution to South Orange would assist in creating the Community Care and Justice Project. This is a pilot program to better serve residents and visitors that suffer as a result of domestic violence, homelessness, drug addiction, juvenile delinquency, mental illness, and police mistrust. To further enhance South Orange's, it will also assist in further enhancing South Orange Police Department's cultural improvements within its operational strategy, protocol, and day-to-day interactions. We, it is, as I mentioned, it is a one-year agreement, and we do have a representative from the township of South Orange available if there are any phone calls. I'm sorry, if there are any questions.
Commissioner, President, I do have a question.
Okay, can you, can you wait till after Mr. Polavecchio and Mr. McInerney go? When we get to the Commissioners' questions? Thank you so much.
Mr. President, they do have a representative from the town also available.
Yes, Donna Collier here. I'm trustee, I'm on the, I'm a councilwoman in South Orange, and I'm, I'm working very closely with the program director, the Community Care and Justice Program Director. I could, I could answer any of your questions.
Okay.
And thank you for that introduction.
Mr. Polavecchio, any questions?
I don't have any questions, Mr. President, thanks.
Mr. McInerney.
No questions, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, this, this program is being sponsored by the township. How exactly will it work? Just give us a quick overview, like is it outreach, is it counseling, supportive services?
Yep, thank you. The, the, the program is, it, it's also in partnership with Seton Hall, and right now we're undertaking a needs assessment. The needs assessment will then in turn drive program design. The program really is intended to focus on wellness and in particular for vulnerable members in our community and our youth. And when we talk about community, that's residents, neighbors, visitors, business owners, anybody who might find themselves in South Orange. And so think about programs like nine-one-one diversion, moving from crisis intervention. We have three hundred or so crisis intervention calls in, in a year through our nine-one-one services to prevention and ongoing support. We, we also envision things like Restorative Practice Council, mental health awareness training for both our law enforcement and first responders, but also the community at large so that we can do some peer-to-peer support from a mental health perspective. And, and that training is going to be largely delivered by some of our friends and colleagues over at Seton Hall University who are very well-versed in, in the topics at hand. They also have supported us with a very, very detailed academic study that's going to be, two, two academic studies that are going to be accompanying the program so that we can be scaling what we learn to other Essex County communities. And that's why we're seeking the, the Essex County partnership.
All right, thank you. Other question is just quickly, what's the timeline do you have for this?
The, the, the needs assessment and program design is The, um, the, uh, the needs assessment and program design is due to be complete at the end, end of June. We are launching some, um, we're, we're launching a couple of small programs this summer, one where we'll be teaming with Newark and our respective police departments, and some of our youth will be working on a leadership program together. And then we'll do more later on in the summer after we get the results of our needs assessment back. And then we hope to be up and running sort of full-time, you know, more like the beginning of next year, and we'll be piloting some of these early-stage programs throughout the remainder of the year.
For you, Mr. President, just a reminder, we'll record. Please state your name and affiliation when you're speaking. President Richardson?
Yes. Commissioner Sebo?
I'd like to know...
Hold on, Commissioner, Commissioner Cooper, were you done?
Yes, thank you so much for that overview, Councilwoman.
Okay, Commissioner Sebo?
Thank you for your question.
I'd like to know who is going to be facilitating all of these programs? Will, will, department, you're reading through this, I'm trying to figure out exactly how it's going to work.
Yes. Yes, this is Donna Collier again, the, uh, the trustee and councilwoman from South Orange. The, uh, the programs will be driven by social workers. So we're going to hire a lead social worker who will be overseeing a team, likely part-time at first, a team of social workers that then will, will, will use some of the existing assets that are already in our communities. And so, you know, there might be substance misuse support from existing organizations. We work with, uh, we work with the county on domestic violence, for example, and so we would be helping our residents in need to get more directly connected to some of the existing assets. So the, the idea is to have the social workers at hand to intervene when there's crisis, but then to follow up and to make sure that residents that need help from all these various agencies that are available get support in doing so. And so, you know, follow-up, you know, preventative measures and follow-up if something gets to a crisis intervention point so that we can get the community to a healthier place overall.
So these social workers will be paid for by the pilot program? And will they be working with the police department? There seems to be...
Yes, this is...
...the police department in the memorandum.
Yes, absolutely. Donna Collier speaking again, and so, you know, our police department, we, as I mentioned, we mentioned, we, we, community includes everybody that works here. And so, um, you know, we'll be doing mental health awareness with our police department. And so that could be a social worker that's helping the police department to better understand mental health needs. That could be an academic from Seton Hall University. We are partnering with some other academics from other institutions as well. And so these social workers and/or academics could and will be interacting with our police department. And if we can get it all the way to 911 diversion for some of the calls that might otherwise be handled by PD in South Orange, you know, those social workers might even be out on calls with police officers.
So it's a, so the result is bringing the police department more up-to-date in terms of the procedures it can use with the community, is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, that's what I was looking for. Thank you very much for your information. It sounds like a really good program.
Oh, thank you.
It's one that other towns should follow.
We are really excited to, um, to, um, to push it out to other towns. We've had some outreach. Dr. Rios, who is our program, current program director from Seton Hall University, is already working with, um, with Newark and Jersey City, and we've had inquiries from Bloomfield, I believe, and, um, and beyond. Dr. Rios is also working with folks of interest over in Brooklyn. We do hope to, to plant the seed further beyond South Orange.
Thank you. And that was number, Resolution Number Eight. So we have Number Nine as well, right, Mr. Jackson?
That's correct, Mr. President. Gassion?
Thank you. Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council, Resolution Number Nine, is seeking the approval by the Board of Commissioners for a lease agreement between the County of Essex and the State of New Jersey Superior Court Essex Vicinage. This is a lease for approximately 43,798 square feet in the new Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Building that is just recently in its final stages of completion. This is a twenty-year lease with two five-year options to renew. The State of New Jersey is seeking to lease two floors of this building for the purposes of additional courtroom space to house Superior Court judges. The lease rates are set forth in the lease that is attached to the resolution. The annualized rent will be paid on a monthly basis, and the total rent payable to the county over the course of the twenty-year lease will be $32,629,510, again, paid in monthly installments. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a question for Ms. Gassion. Are these, is this courtroom space being relocated from any other locations in the county or elsewhere, or is it in addition to courtroom space already being utilized?
So these courtrooms are, are in the, were they tax and equity courts that are currently located at the Willens Building, which is located here in North on Halsey Street? Those courtrooms are actually the ones that are being relocated to the new Martin Luther King Building.
Mr. McInerney?
Are those courtrooms that are being relocated, that are used now, are, are they under specific leases, or are they county properties?
Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council, do you mean are they under leases with the County of Essex?
Yes.
So the, the County of Essex currently owns, has condo ownership at the Willens Building that is leased through the ECIA to the State of New Jersey.
What, what's the county's responsibility to the courts, to the state courts, in terms of facility costs? Is there something the county has to pick up with regard to those costs? Is the county responsible for certain amounts of those costs?
Or the, again, Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council, I, just to clarify, Mr. McInerney, are you speaking about under the, the new lease that we're seeking approval on or previously under?
Just, just in general, is there, is there a responsibility that the County of Essex operating budget has to appropriate for a certain amount of facility cost incurred by the court? So when, when the state took over the courts, I guess my question is, I was under the presumption that the county still had incurred certain facility costs to maintain those courts.
So, to your point, Mr. McInerney, there is an obligation on the county to provide courtroom space to state Superior Court judges. As you can see in the current lease that we're seeking approval on, the rental cost is, is borne by the state of New Jersey. The county is going to be responsible and has been responsible for any costs associated with the maintenance of the common areas, upkeep and maintenance of those areas. Security is going to be the responsibility of the county. Parking is provided by the county as well. I'm not sure if there's, if that's what you're referring to, I'm not sure if there's a breakdown in percentage of costs that are borne by the county versus the state.
Okay, so there's certain responsibilities with regard to court space cost, facility cost, that are responsibilities of the State of New Jersey, and certain of those costs, whether it's common areas or parking, that are responsibility of the County of Essex. Is that correct?
Courtney Gassion, Essex County Council, I, I can tell you with regard to these particular spaces we're talking about, the old space and the new space, that is accurate. I can't say that that's the case in every, in every particular lease, but it has been for the leases we have entered into with the State of New Jersey for courtroom space. I don't know, quite frankly, maybe Mr., maybe Mr. Jackson or Mr. Polavecchio knows, but I do not know if there's a general obligation of a breakdown between the state and the county for, for particular costs associated with leasing for courtroom space.
But, but these...
I can certainly find out and provide that information to the, to the...
Well, well, thank you, but, so, but these, these are revenues that are, these are lease revenues that are going to come to the county, correct? From the state?
That is correct.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I just, I mean, there's something there that says that the county had some responsibilities, I don't know if Michael recalls this, or it was maybe before, when the state took over, the, uh, the, you know, the courts from, from the county, but I, I was under the impression that the county had to maintain or incur costs that were associated with certain facilities of the state courts, like that on, on Halsey Street, whether or not the county actually paid for those that, you know, that facility for the courts, or whether the courts paid them. I just, I would like some clerk, if I can, if not too much trouble, just to see if there's a way to outline that. What, what's the responsibility on facility cost for the county versus that of the state?
No problem, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to provide that information, Mr. McInerney.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. And Commissioners, any questions or comments on Resolution Number Nine? Okay, hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Mercado to take Resolutions Eight and Nine as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill? Absent. Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano? Absent. Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved. Mr. President? I think it's time that we met the six o'clock obligation, and it's, it's after six now, it's 6:15. I, I, would, would you like to move back to the public hearing for a grant application for Urban Parks Grant Program?
Absolutely, and would you take care of this, please?
Okay. Mr. President, would you like me to read it?
Uh, yeah, I mean, you could read it into the record at a later date, but let's, we need to open the public hearing, correct?
Yes.
So, uh, I hereby declare that the, uh, the public hearing for the Urban Parks Grant is now open. If there are any member of the public who email comments for or against this grant application, we'll read your comments into the record and respond to you in writing. Are there any callers in the queue?
Mr. Malumba, do we have any callers in the queue?
Thank you, Mr. President. We do not, the Tallamulla Public Information Officer, we do not have any callers in the queue.
Madam Clerk, was there any written questions?
We have none.
Okay, so I have Commissioner Sebo and Commissioner Johnson.
Mr. President?
Commissioner, yeah, uh, Mr. Polavecchio?
Is there anything that the administration, administration needs to put on the record on this, or just that it's announced?
Mr. Jackson?
But we, Mr. Zaitz, on, uh, at least you want a very brief description of the project?
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Okay. Mr. Zaitz?
Good evening, President Richardson and the entire Essex County Board of County Commissioners. My name is Joshua Zaitz, and I am the Contract Administrator for the Essex County Department of Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs. This public hearing is a requirement as part of a grant application for which the County of Essex is requesting funding from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protections 2021 Urban Parks Grant Program for improvements to Westside Park in Newark, New Jersey. This project is a top open space and recreation priority for the county and will support the local needs of the surrounding residents and county ride recreation needs while addressing the state's commitment to environmental justice. Westside Park, one of the original five parks in the Essex County Park System, is located on roughly thirty-one acres of land in the central ward of Newark. Today, it is the ninth largest park in the county system. The original park design was completed by the famous Olmsted Brothers, Brothers Landscape Architecture Firm in the late nineteenth century. The park has undergone several renovations over its hundred-twenty-six-year history, including the development of a community center and gymnasium building that was constructed in nineteen eighty-seven. The community center will be undergoing an expansion. The current tennis courts will be removed to make way for the expansion and for additional parking. The county is requesting a grant from the Urban Parks Grant Program to create new tennis courts in another section of Westside Park between the football field and baseball field. In addition to the new tennis courts, sports lighting, bleachers, signage, fencing, fencing, and other such amenities will also be part of the project scope. The total estimated project cost is $2,620,100, and the county is requesting a $500,000 grant from this grant program to support the proposed scope of work. In addition to addressing the capital improvement needs of the Essex County Park System and the local recreational needs of the Newark community, the project addresses the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protections implementation of New Jersey's new environmental justice law. This law prioritizes investments in overburdened communities. Overburdened communities are defined as census tracts with at least thirty-five percent low-income households, at least forty percent minority residents, or forty percent households with limited English proficiency. I'm happy to answer any questions the Board of Commissioners or the publics may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney?
I don't have any questions either, Mr. President.
Commissioner Sebo?
No, I'm in full support of this. It's been discussed by the Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Board, and I'm very happy that Josh Zaitz explained it fully.
Thank you. I have, um, from Commissioner Sebo and Commissioner Johnson, the codes, public hearings. Do I have the same mover and second to approve it?
Yes.
Yes.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano? Absent. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill? Absent. Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions Ten and Eleven, which are from the Hospital Center. We'll read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Mr. DelGaudio will address these items.
Good evening, Commissioners. Resolution, this is Frank DelGaudio, Director, Essex County Hospital Center. Resolution Ten is a, we're seeking a two-year affiliation agreement with Bloomfield College for, um, to have, have some of their students get their clinical affiliations that are necessary to complete their degree. Uh, open for any questions on this resolution.
Mr. Polavecchio?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions, Mr. President.
Commissioners, any questions on Resolutions Ten? Hearing now, let's go to Eleven.
Okay, Frank DelGaudio, Director, Essex County Hospital Center. Resolution Eleven is a, we're seeking approval for a twelve-month option on our current dietary contract with GD Correctional Services. The amount... The amount of the, um, of the contract, the 12-month contract, represents a 3.5% increase over the expiring contract. This was awarded via competitive contract three years ago with two 12-month options. We do have Kevin Kelly, who is the site manager here at the hospital, who is on call, who can, um, answer any questions relative to this, to this contract extension.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio?
Uh, just a question I think is directed to Mr. DelGaudio. Frank, is thi- this is the first extension of the two 12-month extensions that were both into this contract? Is that correct?
Uh, through you, Mr. President, Frank DelGaudio, Director Essex County Hospital. That is correct. Um, the original specification, um, requested the pricing be for two individual 12-month extensions.
And this is number one of the two?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. McInerney?
Did you say, Frank, this was the first extension on the, on the original contract?
Uh, through you, Mr. President, Frank DelGaudio, uh, this is the first 12-month extension.
And then there's one more after this?
Correct.
All right, all the pricing has been agreed upon, correct?
Yeah, there was a, a market index, um, increase or decrease based on how the market was going, and the cost of food, as everyone knows, has increased significantly. So, um, the 3.5%, however, our census is down. So if you really look at the financials on this, it'll probably be a wash, um, since due to COVID, our restrictions on admissions, um, it probably will be similar to what the expiring contract was.
So the, 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 the reduction in population has, uh, offset the increase in the cost in terms of the overall cost of the contract?
Through you, Mr. President, Frank DelGaudio, Director Essex County Hospital. That's correct. So we base our proposal on 65,000 meals, and, um, that's based on 100, a census of 172 patients daily. So when patients go out, um, you know, they go on weekend passes or what have you. We haven't gotten to that yet, and our census today is 156.
Okay.
So the meal, the meal counts are down, and in credit to GD Correctional, they have not reduced their staff, even though their revenue on our contract is down.
Okay, that's good. All right, thanks, Frank.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Here we now, I have a motion from Commissioner Vice President Palmaras and a second from Commissioner Sebo to take resolutions 10 and 11 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano? Absent. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill? Absent. Commissioner Cooper? Commissioner Cooper? Absent. Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions 12 and 13, which are from the Division of Community Health, and we'll read them into the record at later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Director Fishman will address these items.
Good evening, Commissioners. Eileen Fishman, Director of Community Health Services. The number 12, um, is for, um, shared service agreement with the Township of Nutley for hazmat services, so that if there's ever a spill of any kind, they come out and, um, address those needs. It's pretty much, it is the same contract that we've had year after year with them, and actually for the same amount.
Thank you. Mr. McInerney?
Mr. President, this is a longstanding contract. Um, I don't have any questions on it.
Thank you, Mr. Polavecchio.
I don't, I don't have any questions either.
Commissioners, any questions? Here we now, let's move to 13.
Uh, number 13 is for a shared services agreement with the Essex Regional Health Commission, and that is for services addressing our County Environmental Health Act, or our CHA, grants from the state, and, um, they oversee, uh, air pollution, noise pollution, water, uh, et cetera, and, um, the same goes for this contract. It's pretty much a long-term, uh, relationship we have with them, and this contract is, uh, for the same amount that it has been for the last couple of years.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio?
No questions on this.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions, Mr. President.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Here we now, I have a motion from Commissioner Vice President Palmaras and a second from Commissioner Johnson to take resolutions 12 and 13 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Just save the mover and second again for me, Mr. President.
Yes, Vice President Palmaras, and the second is from Johnson, Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano? Absent. Uh, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill? Absent. Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to resolutions 14 through 21, which are from the Department of Parks, and we'll read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Zaitz will address these items.
Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Now that the, uh, public hearing for the Urban Parks Initiative Grant, uh, has, uh, been underway, uh, number 14 is the actual, uh, authorization to apply for that grant. Number 15 is authorization from the Essex County Recreation and Open Space Trust Fund to fund a roof replacement over at the Branch Brook Park Garage. Uh, specifically, this is a roof replacement on the side garage, the small garage, repair and reshingle the greenhouse roof. This is going to fund an existing contract we have in place, which is bid number 19-167 with Northeast Roof Maintenance. Uh, this will strictly just be the funding mechanism for this specific project, uh, within that bid. Number 16 and number 17 are related, in that number 16 is the funding mechanism for number 17. Number 16 is authorization from the Essex County Recreation Open Trace Space Trust Fund to purchase two showmobiles slash portable stages in an amount not to exceed $327,000. And then number 17 is the actual, uh, purchase of those showmobiles through the, under the Bergen County Cooperative Agreement. Uh, the portable stages are, for those of you who are familiar with our summer concert series, uh, these are the, the stages that the different acts perform on. Uh, we plan on purchasing two new ones that will be used for various events throughout the park system. The new showmobiles will replace the two Parks Department, uh, ones that they currently use. Uh, they'll feature LED lighting, stage extensions, stage skirts, uh, and whatnot. Number 18 and number 19 are related. Uh, 18 is the funding mechanism for number 19. Number 18 is authorization from the Recreation Open Space Trust Fund to fund the landscape improvements over Monty Urban Orange Park. And then number 19 is the actual contract award, uh, with, uh, Clark Moynihan Landscaping Construction. Uh, specifically, the project will be for the flower beds. It's going to replace some, some existing landscaping that's kind of in the circle area on the corner of Harrison and Center Street in Orange. Going to tree, uh, include tree pruning, landscaping, planting of various species. Um, and I do believe we have a representative from the Clark Moynihan Group, uh, on the line to answer any questions the board may have about that specific project.
Mr. Zaitz, were you done?
Uh, no, I, I thought that we had a rep online, but I, I'll, I'll continue. Um, number 20 is a contract award.
No, I, I am here. Yeah.
Okay. All right, so just, um, state your name, tell us who you are, your affiliation with the project?
I am Clark Moynihan. I'm the owner of Clark Moynihan Landscape Construction. Um, we're at a Andover Borough, New Jersey. Uh, we have about 25 employees, five of which are, uh, they live in Essex County. Um, at least half of our employees are minority employees. We're non-union. Um, I'm really excited to do this project for you guys, and we have all the plant material ready for installation at a local nursery in New Jersey. Do you have any other questions for me?
Sure, just hold on for a second. Mr. Polavecchio, any questions?
I don't have any questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney? You're muted, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the question goes to, um, the source of funding for this contract. I know for periods of time, we were financing certain, uh, contracts, uh, for, uh, other than, out of open space, other than for just maintenance, employees, and fringe, fringe benefits. There was a period of time that we did a number of contracts through open space, and then there was a period that we didn't do any. Are we back now to looking at open space, uh, funding for, uh, operational costs relevant to parks and recreation? Operational costs in regard to, in regard to cer- certain contracts? So I, I, again, I thought there was a period of time where we did it, then we didn't do it, and now we're seeing some additional contracts going through open space on behalf of parks and recreation.
Uh, Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Uh, through you, Mr. President. Uh, it, it's kind of a ebb and flow situation, um, depending on, on where we stand with our maintenance budget, or if there's some, uh, auxiliary, uh, contracts that we might not have been aware of when we were preparing the budget. We would then, uh, ask the Open Space Board to, to approve those, uh, as an, as needed basis.
Okay, that's, that's, that's a fair enough answer. Um, so it, it, again, it depends on the need, I'm assuming.
Uh, through you, Mr. President. That is, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sebo?
I, I have a statement when we're finished before we vote.
Okay, all right. Uh, so, so since you brought it up, Mr. Moynihan, you said you have, um, uh, half of your workforce is minority? Did I hear that correctly? All right, so you want to give us a breakdown, so when you have women? How, how does it break down? Since you brought it up?
Oh, you want me to break down, uh, every employee in the company?
No, just the minority por- portion of it, because you mentioned, you said you had half of your workforce was a minority. Uh, so since you brought it up, could you give us a breakdown of what that looks like?
Yes, sir. Uh, we have, uh, eight Latinos and two women employees at our company.
No African-Americans?
Um, matter of fact, I do. I have one, I have one part-time African-American.
One part-time, okay. Just wanted to know, since you brought it up. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Zaitz, please continue.
Uh, thank you. Joshua Zaitz, Essex County Parks. Uh, number 20 is a contract award to the eight lowest responsive bidders to furnish and deliver golf course materials, uh, in the amount not to exceed 150,000. Uh, specifically, these companies are Pocono Turf Supply, Grassroots, Grassroots Turf Products, Site One Landscape Supply, Seton Turf Warehouse, Nutrient Ag Solutions, Andre and Son Inc., Fisher and Son Company, and Plant Food Company. Uh, specifically, these are for various, um, items we use on the Essex County's free golf courses. Uh, we, we use what we call an integrated pest management approach to our greens, which is that, uh, pesticides and whatnot are sprayed on the golf courses as needed. Uh, these, these chemicals can only be sprayed by pesticides, by employees who have pesticide licenses through the DEP, of which, uh, the county of Essex currently has five. Number 21 is a contract award to Aquamist Irrigation to provide irrigation fountain aeration, aerator maintenance and service repairs in amount not to exceed 829,692 dollars and 50 cents. Specifically, this is for the maintenance, which includes the opening and then eventual closing of the various irrigation systems throughout the park system. It includes sprinklers and flower beds, uh, golf course aerators, uh, general park aerators, uh, any spray parks in the county. And I do believe we have, uh, Mr. Mugivan on the line, uh, who is a representative for the company.
Good evening, County Commissioners. Uh, it's nice to be back again in front of you. Uh, regretfully not in person, um, but Aquamist Irrigation has been around for 28 years. We've been servicing-
Who, who, who's speaking?
Walter Mugivan, Aquamist Irrigation.
Okay, please continue.
Okay, uh, we've been taking care of the county irrigation, water parks, golf courses, um, Turtleback Zoo, and all the other irrigation systems throughout the county, uh, for quite a few years now. Um, we are a small business enterprise. Uh, we are non-union, but we are certified public works contractors, and, um, we look forward to keeping Essex County green.
Mr. Polavecchio, any questions?
No, not for me, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions, Mr. President.
Commissioners?
Uh, yes, I'd like to say something, if I might. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. Please.
Um, on May 10th, we had an Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Board meeting, and many of these items which are listed that we're voting on, uh, tonight were discussed fully at that meeting. And I'd like to call your attention to the purchase of the two new showmobiles and stages that we're going to have, because there were some questions about that. The two new ones are going to replace two that are over 25 years old. And those of you who have been to the parks when the presentations are made, uh, I'm sure you've seen them, and these are going to be, uh, modernized, they're going to be ADA compliant LED lighting, as Josh said before, and I think this is going to be a great improvement to have for our show stages, which will be used in the park. And all of the other things we discussed fully, we think are, are really, really, uh, good maneuvers that we're going to have. So I thank you very much, and I hope you all vote in favor of all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebo. I have a question for the last gentleman you had on, Mr. Zaitz. Uh, forgive me for not writing your name down. Are you still there?
Uh, I am still here. Walter Mugivan, Aquamist Irrigation.
Yes, so, so I just had, uh, two quick questions. Where, where you guys located? Where's your company located?
Uh, we're in South Arkansas in Northern County.
Okay, and you, you've had this contract for how long? You've been working with the county for how long?
I, I believe this would be our fourth contract.
Fourth what? Five-year contract? Two-year contract?
Uh, each one was a, yeah, each one was a one-year with one, with two one-year extensions, and now this one is a two- and now this one is a two-year, from what I understand, with a possible one-year extension.
So that leads me to my last question. How many Essex County residents do you employ?
We do not employ any. Well, we had one gentleman, but regretfully, he passed away from COVID in June last year.
So has he been replaced on your staff?
He has not been replaced by anyone from Essex County. We can't seem to get anyone from Essex County who wants to drive through South Hackensack.
To drive to South Hackensack to work in Essex County?
Well, our shop is located in South Hackensack, and that's where everyone needs to start, because we don't necessarily go to Essex County every single day. We work throughout all of northern New Jersey and eastern Pennsylvania.
I mean, if you're paying a fair wage, I'm sure you can find someone who'll drive wherever they need to go.
Well, we've actually had this conversation before.
I recall.
And we have, yes, and we, you sent us some information last year. My office signed up for everything, reached out, and no one ever got back to us.
I, I wish, I wish I had have been made aware of that fact. Let's try it again.
We, we did, absolutely. Send whatever information to my office. I'm always willing to hire people who want to work.
Absolutely. Appreciate that. So Madam Clerk, please get his information again, and we'll try it again. We'll circle back and see if we can find you someone from Essex County who doesn't mind driving to South Hackensack.
Absolutely, looking forward to it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Stevo and a second from Commissioner Johnson to take Resolutions 14 through 21 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Stevo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Mr. President Richardson?
Yes.
Don't move.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions Number 22 through 30, which are under the Department of Public Works, and we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Antonio is going to address these items.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is David Antonio. I work with the Department of Public Works. Item Number 22 is a contract change order with DAPCO Incorporated for the construction of the new Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Justice Building, which will add an additional amount not to exceed $1,051,713.31. The change order is due to the addition of 55 courtroom benches needed for the third and fourth floor produced by the New Jersey Courts. It is also required because of an upgrade for the proposed terrazzo to match the building facade, which will add an additional 22,104 square feet of port, of port terrazzo, and also increasing the bridge glass to clear existing electrical conduits. That would be the pedestrian bridge that connects the Holle Records Building to the new Amoké Justice Building. This change order will be funded through capital funds, and once all the three invoices are tallied, it is a 1.44% change order to the overall project cost. Item Number 23 is a contract award to APS Contracting for the first T-building at Hendrix Field Golf Course. This is an amount not to exceed $1,978,000. It's a 190-day contract. It includes the construction of a new first T-building and an outdoor pavilion structure, which will include a concrete pad, concrete walkway, and any electrical service connections required, including amenities. Daniel Carmalt from APS is on the phone, and he would like to have a few words with the board. Daniel, are you on?
Yes, Mr. President. Can you hear me?
I can't. Please continue.
Hello. Sorry. Mr. President, commissioners, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Dan Carmalt, and I'm vice president at APS Contracting. We're a small business general contractor in Patterson, New Jersey. We've been in business now for about 21 years. We're relatively small. We have only about 15 permanent full-time employees. We supplement that on a per-project basis, but of our 15 permanent employees, three of them reside in Essex County. We are not a party to any collective bargaining agreements, but on this project in particular, our plumbing and our site work subcontractors are union subcontractors, and of course, we do pay prevailing wages on our projects. We have successfully completed a number of projects now with Essex County, and we're excited to be working with you again.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions, Mr. President.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for this gentleman? Hearing that, continue, Mr. Antonio.
Item Number 24, contract award to DMD Contracting for construction of the new DPW and Sheriff's Grove Avenue facility. DMD was the lowest responsive bidder of the five bids received. This will be a 240-day contract, amount not to exceed $11,250,000. Funding will partially come from the American Rescue Plan Act, and the building, once completed, will house Essex County's Department of Public Works Traffic and Signal Shop and its sign shop, as well as the Sheriff's Office. DMD Contracting's Keith Wagner is on the phone with us. Keith?
Good evening, Mr. President. This is Keith Wagner. I'm the executive project manager for DMD Contracting, and we're located in Wayne, New Jersey. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
DMD is a privately owned company founded by Michael Doverick in 2015. The three main leaders of the company collectively, we have close to 90 years of experience in public and private construction. We focus most of our business on public works projects with experience in K through 12th grade public school renovations and new construction, higher education college renovations, public housing reservations, renovations and restorations, municipal construction, including firehouse centers, police stations, and parking garages. We've also built privately owned hotel projects and assisted in design, build of hotels and manufacturing facilities. In addition to self-performing all aspects of general construction activities, DMD is highly experienced in construction management of multi- and single prime contracts, and coordination of multiple subcontractors with working crews up to and above 100 men on site. We employ 17 full-time field and staff, and additional 12 to 15 tradesmen, which are primarily union workers hired through project labor agreements as needed. Currently, we have approximately 15% of our full-time staff are Essex County residents. One project manager and one superintendent are both Essex County residents. 25% of our full-time field and office staff are female, and we average minority employment of 30 to 35% of our total workforce, which varies based on the assignments from the local unions. DMD is not signatory to a local union bargaining agreement, although the majority of our work in New Jersey and New York City are governed by project labor agreements. We actively look for and welcome project labor agreement projects, as we feel it gives us more competitive and level fields for bidding, and a higher caliber pool of subcontractors. Generally speaking, we find that GCs and subcontractors that not wish to do the PLA project are usually trying to hide something, and we prefer to work with those that are open and willing to work with the local unions. We're contracted, or will be contracted, to construct the new Essex County Department of Public Works and Sheriff Grove Avenue facility, as described by Mr. Antonio previously. DMD's, we've previously worked with the County of Essex on public projects, and in addition to DMD's experience, I've also worked with County of Essex on the VOTEC School with a previous employer. We find it very exciting to work with the county. We've always been fond of their projects. We found them to be well-designed and practical, and we find that the overall relationship and working with the county is beneficial to both sides, cooperative. There's never a lot of arguing back and forth. If there's a problem, you find a resolution and get the jobs done. We recently completed the Essex County South Mountain Recreation Center parking deck. DMD is not a registered WBE, MBE, or veteran-owned business, although we do value and employ several veterans and, including two retired service members. Any questions?
Ah, thank you. That was a mouthful. Appreciate the information. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Nothing additional to that. Thank you.
Mr. McInerney?
Again, part of this, I understood, was being financed from the recent allocation of funds from the federal government that we got because of the pandemic. Is there any funds here? I don't have the sort of, the certification of funds in front of me. Is there any county funds being used in this? This is to the administration.
Yes, through you, Mr. President, yes. Excuse me, there will be capital funds used in addition to this, as part of our, the reallocation of the $7.8 million that we did earlier. Part of that will go toward this as well.
All right, so there's, that has, the reallocation has no impact whatsoever on the $20 million self-imposed authorization that the county has, so we're, we're still in compliance with that, so.
Through you, Mr. President. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissions, any questions? Or comments? Thank you. Let's move on.
Item Number 25 is a contract change order with T. Faris &amp; Sons, also known as Direct Waste Services, Carjun Recycling, for the collection and disposal of garbage and rubbish. This will add an additional $219,367.52 to an existing contract, bringing it to a 20% change order. The need for this additional funds has arisen because of the five Essex County COVID vaccination facilities, and the need to maintain these facilities in a, in a manner that is appropriate. That would be the Donald Payne High School, it would be for Livingston at the former Sears, the West Colville campus for the high school, Essex County College in Newark, and of course, the former West Orange Kmart site. Item Number 26 is to provide construction engineering and inspection services for 12 traffic signals along Bloomfield Avenue in Montclair. This is a federally funded effort. The firm selected KS Engineers as the highest rated out of the seven responses we received. This company will provide construction plan review, specification, field visits, it will do pre-construction meetings, it will review plans and specs, and provide responsive contractors, and various, various engineering-related tasks. This project will involve the construction of 12 intersection improvements through Bloomfield Avenue in Montclair, including two new traffic signals at Bloomfield and Midland, and also Bloomfield and Seymour in Montclair. On the phone with us is Kamal Shahid. He is the president of KS Engineers, and he may have a word to share with the group here. Kamal, are you on the phone?
Yes, thank you, David. Good evening, Mr. President and commissioners. My name is Kamal Shahid. I'm president and founder of KS Engineers. Our company is a professional engineering and construction management firm. We have been in Newark for the last 30 years. We moved to Newark in 1991, and currently, the company has close to 250 people. Of that, about a little over 100 people report to Newark every day. We just renewed our lease for another 12 years, so Newark is our home. We come here every day. Through, through COVID, we've been here almost every day. And so, we, we do hire, our company has 71% of our employees are members of minority, various minority, as well as women. We do hire from Essex County. We always try to hire from Essex County. Currently, we have 12 employees, engineers, who are from, who live in Essex County. The company has done several projects for, similar projects for Essex County, as well as other neighboring counties. Essex County projects that we have done in recent years are Berkeley Avenue Bridge Construction, South Orange Avenue in Melbourne and South Orange. Before that, we, we provided similar construction management services to Central Avenue Phase 1 and 2 in Newark, and most recently, we have provided the inspection services for roadway resurfacing for 2020. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio, any questions?
No, no, sir.
Mr. McInerney?
How is this, how is this being funded?
I believe it's federally funded, right, David?
Through you, Mr. President. This is, yeah, correct. This is 100% federally funded.
Okay. Is this DOT money, or?
FHWA, actually, sir. Federal Highway, directly.
Please, as a general reminder, please put your name on the record every time you speak. Thank you. Are you done, Mr. McInerney?
Yes, sir, I am.
Mr. Antonio, please continue.
Mr. President, I did have a question. We ran right by Number 25, and I did-
You can go back.
Yeah, I, is that, Number 25, with regard to the solid waste, the garbage and rubbish, is that medical waste, or is that just additional household waste?
David Antonio, Department of Public Works, through you, Mr. President. This is general garbage and rubbish, not medical waste, not regulated waste, no.
Who's, who's, how are we, how are we dealing? I'm sorry, did you hear the question?
No.
How are we dealing with medical waste at these vaccination centers?
Through you, Mr. President, David Antonio, Department of Public Works. That is a question I cannot answer. That is not a task or a charge to can answer from, come from Public Works. We, we may not be the best source of that.
Mr. President, please, Coltrier, can you hear me, Mr. President?
I, I can hear you, yes.
Okay, Mr. McInerney, we have, through the CARES Act and through the state of emergency, we have contract with SINTOX for a emergency contract for waste, medical waste at all of our facilities.
Are those contracts coming from the board?
No, it was an emergency contract when we first started months, a year ago. It was under the state of emergency.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Coltrier.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Mr. Antonio, let's continue.
David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item Number 27 is a contract to Trench Technologies to provide 12 traffic signals and roadway improvements in Montclair. As the previous resolution states, the County of Essex will be undertaking improvements to 12 intersections on Bloomfield Avenue in Montclair, including the construction of two new ones. This particular resolution relates to the contractor- This particular resolution relates to the contractor who will be constructing these improvements. This is federally funded. It's a 270-day contract. It is, uh, not to exceed $6,699,829 with 50 cents. Nine bids were received, and Trench Technologies was the lowest in responsive bid. Andrew Amsterdam from French Technologies has joined us this evening. Andrew?
Yes, I'm here. Um, I am Andrew Amsterdam. I'm president and owner of Trench Technologies. Our, uh, office and yard and location is in Livingston, New Jersey, in Essex County. Um, we've been in business for almost 15 years. Uh, prior to that, we were in business under a previous name of J A F Equipment. Um, that was, uh, prior owner. When I bought it 15 years ago, we changed the name to Trench Technologies. Um, since then, we have done many similar projects to this, um, of underground traffic signals, uh, underground traffic signals in Essex County. We've done, uh, work on the Park Avenue project. We've done work currently on the Essex County various nine intersection projects. Um, we have approximately, uh, give or take 12 to 15, uh, full-time employees. Um, because we are situated in Essex County, um, at least, uh, half of our employees are Essex County residents. Um, about 25% of our employees are either minorities or women. Uh, we are affiliated with union, uh, 825 operating engineers for, uh, equipment, uh, and 472, uh, local laborers out of Newark, um, uh, for our labors. Um, so prevailing wage is not an issue because we pay union rate. Um, our services that we're going to be providing, we're going to be doing, uh, the renovations of 12 intersections on Bloomfield Avenue from the west side of Bloomfield Avenue in Montclair to the east side from South Mountain Avenue all the way down to Pine Street, uh, including all of the traffic signals, curbs at the intersection, sidewalks, paving, striping, signage, um, all through Montclair, as well as, uh, all safety and traffic control for the, um, for the project. Um, we're excited for this project. We feel, uh, it is very close to, um, our home base, uh, very easy to get to and mobilize to. And, uh, we have, um, done previous projects with the Department of Public Works as a subcontractor, um, for similar work. Um, what else? Uh, we are a small business enterprise, although not, uh, women-owned or D B E, but we are a small business enterprise registered with the state of New Jersey. Um, any other questions? I'm happy to answer.
Thank you for that information. Mr. Polavecchio?
No questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
Uh, excuse me, I don't have any questions, Mr. President.
Commissioners?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President, may I say something?
Yeah, Commissioner Sebo, there, Commissioner Gill.
Thank you. Um, I had a lot of concerns about the, uh, traffic signals and some of the roadways in Montclair. And I had discussed it with, uh, the county engineer, Sanji Vargas, quite a while ago because I was particularly concerned about one specific intersection. And he said that this work was going to be done in the near future. So I'm very pleased that this is on the agenda tonight for us to approve. And I think it will be a, a well-needed, uh, uh, addition to what, to, uh, Mon, to Montclair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gill?
Thank you, Mr. President. What, when would this work, uh, when would this work commence?
Probably, um, in the middle to the end of June.
And?
And it's a 270 calendar day contract.
Okay, and to be complete, and it's in phases or to be completed?
Uh, we will probably start from the west end at South Mountain Avenue and work intersection by intersection as we go down to, um, to Pine Street, uh, removing the sidewalks, putting the underground traffic signals in, putting back the curbs and sidewalks as we're working on the second intersection and progressing slowly through, through the center of town. And then at the end of the project, uh, milling and repaving all of the street.
This would include, would this include the lights at, um, South and North Fullerton and Bloomfield Avenue, the six-corner intersection?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Every, every traffic signal from South Mountain at the west side to Pine Street on the east side, including two new traffic signals are being renovated.
Okay. Um, from, uh, roughly where the Lackawanna Plaza is, uh, the, the, the intersections maybe from Grove and Elm heading west, when, when do you think you would be in that area of Bloomfield Avenue?
Um, probably, um, beginning of the fall.
So just to?
But if there was some concern, if there was some concern for a specific intersection, there's no reason that we couldn't jump to that intersection and, and come back to, to, to a different schedule. Inter, you know, uh, it's all relatively close. If, if there's concern for scheduling for something going on in town, um, it's not that big of a deal to, to prioritize a certain intersection.
Yeah, I think through you, Mr. President, um, there, you know, there is, and right now, and I think, I think, um, through you, Mr. President, I'll, um, have our clerk reach out to you. I, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page with the municipality because there is plans for, at least as I understand it, um, for, for a, uh, potential request to do something on the avenue at that time of year. So, um, so I think there are some timing issues here that have to be looked at, and I want to make sure everyone is aware of. Um, so we haven't, since, since we would just be moving on this contract tonight, we haven't started any of the local notifications about timing or anything of that nature yet.
Correct.
Uh, and on the, the, I'm assuming that we've, that the lights at the six-corner intersection are going to be done, or, or we've had the conversation to make sure that that's consistent with the potent, with the redesign, with the traffic redesign, the traffic flow redesign of that entire area?
I'm, I'm assuming that the engineers took that into account when designing the project. I can't speak for, for what they've taken into account. I can only speak to the construction schedule of actually, uh, constructing what's on the plan.
Uh, through you. Through you, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Culture?
Yes, I was just speaking with Mr. Vardy, and he has been coordinating with the township and, uh, regarding these traffic signals.
So could you make sure that any information that you guys get, uh, as to any resolutions, that Commissioner, uh, Gill be brought up to speed? And his, uh, concerns be, uh, taken into consideration? Sure he gets the information? Commissioner Gill?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank, that, I think that's it for me, Mr. President. I thought, um, that, I think that would be helpful, and I think the main, you know, my main, um, uh, goal of these questions and, and is just again to make sure that the communication, this has been, this has been talked and discussed and met upon for, for, uh, as our county administrator knows, for some, quite some time now, and, um, and, uh, we will get one crack to do this, you know, right. Um, you know, from, it's going to be from the eastern, uh, or excuse me, from the western gateway or, or from the eastern gateway of, of this community to the western gateway. So it's a generational project that has a lot of moving parts. Um, and I just want to make sure that that communication is as crisp and as clear as possible. I definitely have, um, some concerns regarding the schedule that we can, you know, that I'm sure can be, um, addressed because the, um, my understanding that the, uh, Jazz Festival is looking to do, uh, their event, uh, in the fall and to do it, uh, downtown and, and which would require, uh, closures, you know, of sections of Bloomfield Avenue and, you know, at some point, um, you know, at some point in the fall. So I appreciate that, Mr. President. That's, uh, something that we need to, you know, to take a look at.
Absolutely. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or concerns? Mr. Antonio?
David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item number 28 is a contract award to A B M Industries Group to provide tenatorial cleaning services of various county buildings. This will be a five-year contract at to exceed $12,733,803 with 6 cents. This will include providing cleaning services at 10 county-owned facilities. David Kinsler of A B M is on the phone with us this evening. David?
Hi, yes, this is David Kinsler. I'm the district manager for A B M in New Jersey, and our office is located at the Saddleway, New Jersey. Our mission is to make a difference every person, every day, and our vision is to be the clear choice in the industries we serve. All of our employees that currently work for Essex County are currently living in Essex County. They are all union workers. We have been working with County of Essex for, uh, for 10 years now, and we are very excited to continue our work with this great county. Any questions?
Mr. Polavecchio, any questions?
Just which buildings does this involve? Is it all buildings, some of the buildings?
Uh, through you, Mr. President. Uh, this is David Antonio, Department of Public Works. This is for 10 buildings. The Veterans Courts Building, the Hollow Records and Annex, all floors, the Historic Courthouse, all floors, Leroy Smith Public Safety, the new Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Building, the Veterans Park Deck, the new parking deck, the Hollow Records Parking Deck, the Wildens Justice Complex, Gibraltar, Halsey Street, as it's known by, by some folks, the Essex County Juvenile Detention Center, and the Prosecutor's Office.
Thank you very much. Mr. McInerney?
So I just, just to reflect there, the Halsey Street is a, I believe, a court facility. So we're, getting back to what I was saying before, it looks like we're responsible for the janitorial services within the Halsey Building if, if, if it applies to the courts. Um, just, just something, you know, observation-wise, given what I had asked previously. The other question I have is how is this contract awarded, under what basis? It's not a lowest responsible bid or lowest responsible, responsible bid. What, what, what is the, what is the criteria for this award? Was it an evaluation or?
Uh, through you, Mr. President, David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Uh, there is an evaluation, there is some criteria. Some of the things that were looked at in determining, uh, award or contract to A B M were things like, for example, the Art of the Carbon Bender, that was positive. They have a New Jersey presence. That was not the case with other bidders. Uh, the, their proposed staffing levels were adequate and aggressive. That was not the case necessarily with other bidders as well. This particular vendor, A B M, is, uh, S E I U affiliated. Um, he pays a living wage, and like Mr. Kinsler said, all the folks that work for this company in Essex County live in Essex County. And to us, that brought them to the top of the list.
Okay, what, was, who was the, who was the lowest bid? Were, were they the lowest bid?
Through you, Mr. President. Uh, no, they were not the lowest bid.
Okay, what was the lowest bid?
It was a company called Cleaning Services of Hudson Valley, a New York firm.
And how much were they?
Uh, I believe, oh, $9,800,000 and change.
Okay.
But they were also.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Antonio.
Uh, through you, Mr. President. Um, they might have been the lowest bidder, but they're also the lowest scoring in every aspect possible.
Listen, I, I'm not, I'm not questioning your evaluation process or your ability to judge which is the best for Essex County. I just, you know, want to see what, what those variances are for purposes of just kind of, you know, understanding where, what, what that value, that differential is actually worth. And, and, and you're saying over the five-year period, that variance is, is worth the fact that they have Essex County employees, that they pay a fair and livable wage, and other criteria that, and the fact that they've been here and proven themselves, those criteria have made up the difference between what the contract is and what the other lowest bid was.
Through you, Mr. President, that is 100% correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Those were really good questions, and, uh, I, I also like the fact that all of your, uh, work in Essex County is done by Essex County residents. Your union affiliate, I guess, S E I U 32 B J, sounds about right. And, uh, you pay a living wage, so those are all outstanding attributes as far as I'm concerned. Mr. Antonio?
David Antonio, Department of Public.
Wait, 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 Mr. President, I have, I have some questions.
Commissioner Cooper?
Very much. Um, thank you, Mr. Polavecchio, Mr. McInerney, for asking those questions. I too want to commend, um, I was very excited by your responses, that everybody are Essex County employees, but I do have a few more questions. Um, do we generally award this contract like this with 10 locations and for a five-year, um, term?
Through you, Mr. President, yes, we do. This is Mr. Culture.
So, Mr. Culture, the other locations that's county-owned, do we bid those out the same way with 10 locations together? Do we ever do one-offs, one or two? And I'm asking that question to give, um, smaller vendors, um, an opportunity to, to, to bid on it.
Uh, yes, Julius Culturey Purchasing Agent, yes, we do, uh, through you, Mr. President. We are going out to bid for some smaller locations, which are, um, the Essex County Sheriff's, uh, Headquarters across the street from the Donald Payne School and some other facilities throughout the county.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
So I, I would ask, Mr. Culture, when those bids, uh, are released, please inform the whole board. You can send it to the clerk so she can disseminate that information and we'll make sure that Commissioner Cooper gets that information so that those smaller, uh, vendors have that opportunity, who you guys may miss, so.
Mr. President, I do have one final question for the vendor. What is the, 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 the living wage that, that's paid?
Yes, this is David Kinsler. Uh, currently, it's under the union, uh, C B A agreement. So, uh, we, we're following the C B A rules for, uh, Essex County in Newark.
Do you have a dollar, like, range? It doesn't have to be specific.
Yes, oh, yeah, uh, there, there are difference, the minimum, I'm sorry to cut you off. I apologize.
No, no, go ahead. Thank you.
Oh, yes, so, yes, uh, the minimum wage, uh, that they're currently making is 1770, and they will be getting, receiving a raise as well this October. Uh, that, we do have employees that are making more than that. That's just the minimum they will be making.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Mr. Antonio?
David Antonio, Department of Public Works. Item number 29 is a contract, it's actually exercising a two-year extension to a contract for elevator maintenance, uh, to Elevator Maintenance Corp., Corporation, to provide elevator maintenance services at various locations. This will be a two-year contract, not to exceed $1,164,444. This would provide elevator services for the buildings of the Department of Public Works, the jail, and the parks buildings. Item number 30 is an, it's another, uh, two-year contract extension to National Dust Control Services to provide rental or cleaning of various mats. This will be a two-year contract, not to exceed $48,031 with 68 cents. We have about 94 of this dust control mats along our eight different county facilities, and therefore they will be maintained, cleaned, replaced if required. That concludes the items.
Thank you, Ms. Polavecchio. Any, uh, further questions?
No further questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners? Harry Knott, I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Mercado to take Resolutions 22 through 30 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent, Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please be reminded, we will conduct a public comment session for the non-agenda items at the end of the meeting for any other call-ins. Clerk can give you them, give them the call-in information.
If you're calling and the number is 855-756-7520, that's 855-756-7520, and use the password or passcode 73439. That's 73439. After entering the password, listen for the prompt to press zero to be placed in a queue to speak during the meeting. You will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. And at this time, our Public Information Officer will announce the callers so they can state their comment or question and be reminded. You have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. So at this time, we're accepting calls pertaining to non-agenda items. Charlo Malumba, Mr. Malumba, Public Information Officer, will begin the public comment session now.
We. Is it time for, we do not have any callers waiting to speak at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Malumba. Mr. President, we also don't have any written emails or written comments for public comment session at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions 31 and 32, which are from the Office of the County Administrator IT Office, and we'll read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll address these items.
Third one is for Microsoft. This license covers email customer relationship manager, email security. Last year, we paid $884,000 for the renewal. This year, it's $861,000, a difference of $22,676. We added 1,000 new licenses, but because of that, the price per point per license went down, which is why we have the difference. Number 32 is also a security license for Endpoint, which covers our servers, our laptops, and also PCs. So this is for real-time security monitor, monitoring on those devices. Last year, we spent $78,000. This year is $178,000. This went up because we added an additional 1,000 license.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio?
I don't have any questions on these. I just wanted to be heard after the vote.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners? Questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Vice President Palmaras and a second from Commissioner Sebo to take Resolutions 31 and 32 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano? Absent, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved. Mr. President, I jumped the gun regarding public comment. That is still on the agenda for later on in the meeting.
Mr. President, I just ask, Madam Clerk, can you just read that number one more time, just so there's no confusion? Thank you. That's what I was going to.
All right. The number is 855-756-7520, and the passcode is 73439. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Did you call a roll?
Yes, and that was, the roll call was done and it's so moved.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions 33 from the Office of the Surrogate, and we'll read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Surrogate Kenny is here to address this item.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Commissioners. This item is, it will allow us to develop and maintain our website. I'm sorry, this is Altery Kenny, Essex County Surrogate. I do apologize. This item will help us develop and maintain our website, increase our social media footprint, and our community outreach efforts through marketing and various events and webinars. It is our belief, an increased awareness and a fully informed constituent base will encourage more opportunities for residents to interact with our office regarding updates, laws that are changed, announcements, and resources that we're able to provide our constituents.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny. Mr. Polavecchio?
No questions, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions.
Commissioners? Questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Cooper and a second from Commissioner Gill. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Commissioner Gill.
I would respectfully ask that we find another second. I have to abstain on this resolution.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'm happy to second that.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras. So I have a mover in Cooper and a second in Palmaras. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
President not voting.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent, Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk. You're welcome. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution Number 34, which is from the Office of the Sheriff, and we'll read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a 24-month contract extension through the Office of the Sheriff with Signal Electrical Corporation to provide for preventative maintenance of its health test services in an amount not to exceed $380,000. The original contract was the same amount, of which $44,000 was expended, and it includes $150,000 for parts and materials and installation. It's open-ended, as needed, contract paid for out of operating funds.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Polavecchio?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions, Mr. President.
Commissioners? Questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Johnson. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Absent.
Yes.
Yes, from Commissioner Cooper. Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolution 35, which is from the Office of Purchasing. We'll read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Coltry?
Mr. President, Julius Coltry, Purchasing Agent. This is AccurShred, the lowest responsible and responsible bidder to provide onsite shredding services for 24 months in an amount not to exceed $154,000. We had three bidders. The poundage is going to be 10 cents per pound for year one and 12 cents per pound for year two.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio?
No question, Mr. President.
Mr. McInerney?
No questions, Mr. President.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Johnson. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano? Absent, oh, boy. Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions 36 through 49, which are all commendations and memorials, proclamation, resolutions, and we will read them into the record at a later time.
Mr. President, may I comment on some of them?
Sure. Commissioner Sebo?
Okay, thank you very much. Resolution, it's number 40 for the Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, which you sponsored, President Richardson. I would like to be included in that, and perhaps it could be by acclamation.
I agree wholeheartedly. Acclamation is the best way to go.
Thank you. And also 44 through 46, Commissioner Cooper is sponsoring, and those are commendations for American Federation of State, County, and Municipal employees. And I would like to be included in those, or perhaps by acclamation. And the same for 47, which is honoring Richard Rahman upon his retirement as Chief Executive Officer for New Community Corporation. I'd like to be included on that, and perhaps that could be by acclamation. Thank you.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Yeah, we'd like to, yeah. Do it via.
Yes, absolutely. No problem. I'd love to.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that adding Commissioner Sebo, or is that by acclamation?
Acclamation.
Yeah, I suggest it be by acclamation. Thank you, President Richardson.
So I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Gill, you, do you wish to speak on a particular resolution, sir?
I don't, thank you, Mr. President. I don't. I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. Just double-checking.
I appreciate it.
So I'd like to say a few words, if you don't mind, on Resolution Number 40. Think it's important that we do so. So due to the recent uptick in violence against Asian Americans and what it has caused, it has caused us to realize that we have not given proper attention to Asian, American, Pacific Islanders in Essex County. We have chosen to correct that omission. And I have sponsored the resolution to recognize May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Celebrated in May each year, Asian Pacific, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month recognizes the challenges faced by Asian Americans, Pacific Islanders, and Native Hawaiians in the United States, and celebrates their history and vital contributions to the American story. This year's AAPI theme is advancing leaders through purpose-driven service. AAPI Heritage Month originated with Congress in 1977 and was passed by the House and the Senate in 1978. The month of May was chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States on May 7, 1843, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10, 1869. The majority of the workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. In light of the heightened fear and acts of violence against the AAPI community, the Essex County Board of Commissioners recognizes the generations of Asian and Pacific Islanders who have endured historic discrimination and continue to suffer attacks based on racial and ethnic biases. The current way of violence against Asian American Pacific Islanders is an unfortunate and intolerable part of the systematic racism that continues to scar our society. As we stand in solidarity with the AAPI community, we also pay tribute to the generations of Asian and Pacific Islanders who have enriched America's history and are instrumental in its future success. Thank you.
And thank you very much, President Richardson, and I'm happy that we are all doing it, and it's going to be by acclamation because it is a wonderful idea to do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks, everyone. All right, let's move to Resolutions 36 through 49. Any questions on these? Commissioners, I have a motion from Commissioner Vice President Palmaras and a second from Commissioner Sebo to take Resolutions 36 through 49 as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano, absent, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, do we have any added starters?
Mr. President, we have none.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Report of Board Committees.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Before we move to Report of Committees, could I be added as in the affirmative on Resolutions Number 1, 1 through 13? Uh, one through thirteen?
Absolutely. Madam Clerk?
So noted, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Report, uh, Commissioners, do we have any reports of board committees? Do we have any legislative reports? Are there any written communications? Do we have any unfinished business? Do we have any new business? Hearing none. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to the public comment session on non-agenda items. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration. They also have the opportunity to call in. Madam Clerk?
Okay, Mr. President, at this time, our Public Information Officer will announce the callers so they can state their comment or question, and just be reminded you have three minutes. Uh, please, uh, no laptops or any electronic devices on while calling in. So at this time, we're accepting calls pertaining to non-agenda items. Uh, Mr. Malumba, our Public Information Officer, will begin, uh, our public comment session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Call him, Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Board of Commissioners. We, our first caller, uh, waiting to speak is Gwen Franklin. Ms. Franklin, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin. Gwendolyn Franklin. Two zero two Cleveland Lane, Rockaway, New Jersey. For you up the county. Oh, I get started. Okay, my, my first question is, what was the dollar amount that Essex County received towards COVID-related issues? My second question, what was the protocol when you received a bat sting and you had an allergic reaction and had to stay home sick? Third question. For the Essex County employees that had childcare and the ones that did not have childcare, without childcare, what was the dollar amount applied and allocated towards that line item? And what is the protocol for COVID-related concerns and issues? And the reason I'm being very specific on COVID-related issues, when I spoke to the governor's office, they agreed with me, but every time I, I approached the county, they're saying it's protocol that they do not pay for COVID-related issues. Even if you have COVID, you, you have to, if you do not have any sick days, you must use the days, and you will not get paid. If you have allergic reaction from the shop, you must use your days, and you will not get paid. When I asked for extra masks or gloves or anything pertaining to COVID, I am met with, like, the door closed. I mean, why is it that I am not allowed to receive a whole box of masks? I get a bo, five masks in an envelope. And honestly, it seemed like they must have bought the batch of the cheapest mask, because it's like cardboard in your face. So no one even wants to order them, but when they do order them.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Franklin.
That I am receiving from the county. Just thank God I'm not, you know, I don't have that much fear, because I still continue to order what I need for myself to stay alive at the county. Thank you. If you can answer those questions, I would love it. Thank you. Thank you. Our next caller is Stacy Gregg. Ms. Gregg, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Thank you. Stacy Gregg, Rockaway Township. I am calling, and I have questions also regarding, uh, COVID and the contract. So, um, I gave my email. I'm hoping to get answers, um, to my questions. I'd like to know, for a fact, is the, um, contract just pausing it? Or are you, the Commissioners, going to be ending the contract from ICE? Um, that's the first question. I'd like to know what the percentage of black and people of color are, uh, to white people being held by ICE. That's my second question. Last time I asked, it was below five percent of, uh, people that were not, um, black or people of color. Um, I would like to, my third question is, is, um, certain members of the Commissioners still under the impression that the people being held by ICE are all bad people? Specifically, they are all, um, bad people, murderers, rapists, and drug pushers. To quote Mrs. Sebold, we've never had a clarification. I would like clarification on the beliefs held by all the Commissioners individually, being polled one by one on what their beliefs are regarding the people that they are holding, um, for the ICE money. Um, just May twentieth, Irwin County in Georgia Detention Center, as well as the Bristol, um, Detention Center in Massachusetts, they were, uh, told in the press, um, release from there that, um, came out on the day they were both closed down completely, a hundred percent, that they were two troubled detention centers. One of them was famous for, um, having the women, um, sterilized without their being aware of what was being done to them without consent, um, and the doctors being in the middle of a case getting locked up. We have many cases of abuse and, uh, treatment of immigrants. That was the reason they were closed. And I don't think anyone on that Commissioners' Board can deny that that is what is going on in Essex County. Um, I would like to know exactly how many cases, um, how much money the county has spent on lawsuits for cases against deaths that have happened because of COVID, uh, or during the time COVID started, um, and to cases of abusive treatment of immigrants. Um, we know that they didn't, that, that Essex County failed the inspection of ICE. It wasn't up to ICE's standard. Okay. The anniversary yesterday of George Floyd's lynching, um, showed the country about systemic racism. We know that there's systemic racism happening in Essex County. The money from, um, ICE should not be going for eleven million dollars for a sheriff's building. It needs to be going for services for these people. Close down ICE. Thank you. Stop using human beings' bodies for money.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, we do not have any other callers waiting to speak.
And, Mr. President, uh, we also have no emails or written correspondence for a public comment at this time. That concludes our public comment session.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As is our, uh, practice, we will, e-everyone will be answered, the questions will be answered in writing. Commissioners, any questions or comments you would like to make at this time?
Mr. President, if I may?
Commissioner Vice President Palmaras?
Very briefly, two items. Just a reminder that tomorrow we'll have our weekly food distribution event. It's at, uh, the Orange Park in Clinton Avenue in Irvington. Um, and the second, I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge Mr. Jackson and his team for working closely with me. Uh, you may recall, a few meetings ago, we, I had expressed some concerns about an allocation of flags at the veteran cemetery, and it's been a very difficult, um, challenge actually to get a head count on how many flags were needed, because there is, uh, regrettably, a, a large number of veterans interned at the cemetery. There is a question about recycled flags that they used from last year that's, you know, are still usable and all that. So, uh, through Mr. Jackson and his team, we were able to resolve that, and, uh, over seven thousand flags were planted this past Sunday by first responders here in Bloomfield, by a Cub Scout troop and two different scout troops. And, uh, it's a tradition that my family has, and it's very close and near to us, that we, uh, do these things so that we can, um, you know, it's a way, a simple gesture, but nonetheless, an important one to, uh, remind us all why, uh, you know, we have this, uh, weekend coming up. You know, it's a holiday for most people, but it is, uh, indeed a very solemn day for most people, especially those whose families have endured a loss and all that. And I, I am very fortunate to not have endured a loss, though one of our family members, uh, in my, uh, in our family, uh, we did nearly lose a few years back. And so this is a very poignant time to remind all what this weekend is all about. Mr. Jackson, again, thank you for your assistance, and, uh, hopefully now we have a new pattern for working over there.
If I may, Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jackson?
I, I just want to, uh, thank, uh, Vice President for those kind words. It was really our honor to work with you, sir, to make it happen, and, uh, uh, working with, uh, the Vice President. Uh, he wouldn't have it any other way that we would get it done. So, uh, yeah, we're happy to do it, but he made sure, he beat us up pretty good to make sure that we got it done. But, uh, it was, it was honorable and, uh, our pleasure. Thank you, sir.
Outstanding. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Take care, be safe. Take care of each and every one. Thank you.
Happy birthday, Madam Clerk.
Happy birthday, Madam Clerk. Good night, everyone.
Enjoy the evening, President.
Stay right.
Happy birthday, Madam Clerk.
President.